The April 19, 2023 Planning Board Meeting is called to order. This is to advise that the revised notice of time, date, location, and to the extent known, agenda of the subject meeting was prominently posted in the public place reserved as such or similar announcements on April 13, 2023, and transmitted to the Times, Princeton, Packin, and West Windsor and Plainsboro News on April 13, 2023, and filed with the township clerk on April 13, 2023. Cindy, please call the rocks.
Mr. Patel? Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Schichtel? Mr. Pankov?
Yes.
Mr. Beg? Ms. Bowery? Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers?
Here.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberman?
Here.
Chairman Carr?
Here. Thank you. We have a call. I'm told the liaison reports. The people are not here to provide those, right?
Well, I've been filling in for Joytica.
Okay.
She's been away, so I can give it now if you want.
Sure. Why don't we get ahead and do that?
Yeah, okay. The Affordable Housing Committee met on April 6. The committee completed its discussion and voted unanimously to send its proposed recertification program for the rental subsidies for very low-income tenants to the township clerk and council for consideration. Some of the highlights include, there's a proposal suggests a recertification every three years, however, the tenant would have the option of not participating if there is a concern they are no longer qualified. Any information collected would not be used for any other purpose. The recertification program would be paid through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So it's up to the, is the council president, whether it will go on for discussion or not? I don't think it's going to, but that is not my call.
Okay. Thank you. And Annis is not here, so Environmental Commission report will be tabled to another date. Okay. I'll open it up for public comments on non-agenda, non-pending items. If anybody from the public wishes to speak, please step up to the microphones, state your name, address, and for the record. Okay, seeing none. We will head right to application PB 22-09. This is Carnegie Center, Building 105, minor site plan. Bulk variances and waivers, block nine, lot 71, 105 Carnegie Center. Property is owned ROM-2 District, MLUL for 1923.
Mr. Chair, proof of publication service are in order, and the board has jurisdiction. But Greg, I have one question for you on the notice.
Yeah, Jerry.
In the third paragraph, it says, "The building has 75,787 rentable square feet." And then later on, it says that the gross floor area is being reduced to 58,458. What's the distinction between?
So the, and you'll hear a little bit of that in some of Mike Thomas's testimony later this evening, but generally, the, if we were to rent the entire building, it includes the penthouse space, which for the purposes of the definitions under West Windsor Township's ordinance are not included. So we gave you the rentable value in terms of what we actually would lease it out for, but under the strict definition of FAR, it's actually reducing. It's an important point, though, Jerry. You'll hear Mike also mention because of the way the FAR is calculated for Carnegie Center, it's actually fungible across the whole campus. And while, plus of the orientation of how the building is being reconfigured as per this conversion, we hear a lot about that, we want to preserve that FAR number. And so we had mentioned to Sam, we'll probably come back when we refine the design criteria and standards that we were having, we were going to do that at a prior hearing, and we had to kind of change them around a little bit. We come back to do that, we can address that FAR calculation at that time.
And Greg, why don't you state your name for the record?
Yep, I'm going to do my whole little introduction. So, good evening, everybody. Gregory Ricciardi, Vice President, Council from Boston Properties, BXP, here on behalf of BPLP, the applicant this evening. The project's located in the ROM 2 zoning district. It is part of Carnegie Center East in the 100 Series. It's part of its general development plan. It's identified as 105 Carnegie Center. As council noted, the notice was sent to all interested parties on April 6, 2023. It was published in the Trenton Times on April 6, 2023, and an affidavit of proof of service was submitted to the planning board on April 17 of 2023 with an assist from some Comis Epstein Gross. The applicant tonight requests preliminary and final minor site plan approval, C-bulk variances, and design waivers for interior renovations, as well as some exterior improvements to the existing three-story office building known as 105 Carnegie Center. The reason for this is we're converting an existing vacant office building to a laboratory life science facility where approximately 40% of the space we dedicated to the office and the remainder converted to lab. As I mentioned, the project has a street address of 105 Carnegie Center. It's designated as block nine, lot 71 on the official tax map of the township. The exterior site improvements include, but are not limited to, the installation two loading areas, two diesel backup generators with sound attenuating enclosures, nitrogen and hydrogen tank storage areas with filling stations, prefab shelters for hazardous gas storage, and a 2000 KVA transformer. The site plan calls for revegetating certain areas, as well as modifications to existing parking areas, which is generally what's triggering the need for us to come before you this evening since we have some changes to our impervious coverage, but ultimately balancing everything on the site so that it remains as it is today in terms of the calculations. We will be requesting certain variances of design waivers. We will have testimony from a planner to provide the proofs required with respect to same. As Jerry had asked, while the building has a rentable square feet of 75,787 square feet, based upon the floor area ratio, floor area definition in the West Windsor Township, we're actually decreasing floor area based upon some of the lab mechanicals. Given the nature of this conversion, you'll hear some details about that, as well as see some elevation images. You can see what we're doing with respect to the screening of those materials. Kind of gives this building some interesting dynamics, modernizes a little bit, consistent with what we're seeing across some of our other assets at Carnegie Center. In terms of the review letters, we received the landscape architecture review from Dan Divermillsky, dated April 12, 2023. Traffic engineering review letter from Aurora and Associates, dated April 3, 2023. Planning review letter from Dave Novak of Burgess Associates, dated April 12. The engineering review letter from Francis Guzik, township engineer, dated April 12, 2023. Fire and emergency services review from Chief Tim Lynch, dated April 12. I request that the plans, applications, reports that the applicant submitted as part of the application to the board be made part of the record for the board this evening.
Yes, they're part of the record.
Thank you. So we'll be presenting to you this evening four witnesses. I believe one of them just arrived, much to my relief. First, you're going to hear from Emily Mass. She is one of my colleagues at BXP in our development team, and she is project manager for this project. You'll hear from Michael Thomas, who this board is intimately familiar with. He is our project engineer. You'll hear from Brooks Slocum, who's principal with SGA Architecture, who has provided the design and some of the modifications with respect to the building itself, both on the exterior and the interior. And depending upon timing, you will hear from a planner, and maybe John McDonough, or maybe his associate whom I have not met yet. So, but we will have a planner that will proffer the required proofs with respect to the variances and waivers that we are requesting.
Greg, you made reference at the beginning that, you know, you're here for minor site plan approval, the bulk variances, and the design waivers and exceptions. But you, as you responded to Jerry saying, "We'll come back for," and you mentioned some items, is this like a part one of a two-part process with the planning board?
No, so it's very much just this application as it relates to Building 105. And so what I was alluding to is the floor area that's dedicated to Carnegie Center is one number for the whole campus, right? And so this particular building, at the time it was approved back in 1988, or even earlier, was allocated a certain number pursuant to that total. And we don't want to necessarily lose that number in perpetuity because we are going to reduce the size of this. If at some point in the future, we came back to this board and we decided that we no longer wanted to operate this, it's a beautiful lab building we're going to tell you about, we wanted to put it back as an office, we may need to take that FAR back, right? We need to put it back in the building. Or we might come to this board at a later date with an applicant who wants to do a lab building, and we need to add FAR to another building. Because that's part of the approved floor area for Carnegie Center, we don't want it to just go away, because then we'd have to come back to you and say, "Oh, wait, we need a variance for floor area."
So what you were saying was not in reference to this particular application, but if in the future something happens with the building 105, you know, you'd come back?
It's purely just to memorialize at a later date in connection with another application that we have to do for the campus, not all that unlike what the board saw with respect to our preliminary B master plan for Carnegie Center West. We're going to come back with respect to the east side and adopt, or rather, a quest to be adopted, certain design criteria that we've implemented in conjunction with the landscape architect and the engineer, and as prepared by TNM. And as part of that process, we would probably just revisit this lost floor areas, but it doesn't just evaporate.
I understand, thank you.
Yep. So with that, I would like to introduce and call up Ms. Emily Mass.
Excuse me. Can we have all the witnesses stand and swear minimum?
We sure can.
It's easier. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and why don't we have our staff also? If you could all raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I so do.
So sworn or affirmed? At least for the applicant's witnesses, if you could state your full name and spell your last names.
Yeah, you're going to come over here, Emily, and use this microphone right here. I'll get to use the MC mic.
Emily Mass, M-A-S-S.
Thank you.
Michael Thomas, H-I-L-L.
Brooks Slocum, S-L-O-C-U-M, and it's Brooks with an S.
And counselor, when my planner arrives, I'll make sure that when we introduce his testimony, we get him sworn in. So Emily?
We're going to swear in our own.
Yeah, and just if you could all state the numbers of the staff, if you could all just state your full name.
With Burgess Associates.
At the planning.
Oh, wait, that's all. Aurora and Associates, traffic engineer.
Dan Divermillsky, township landscape architect.
Ian Hill, H-I-L-L, Van Cleef Engineering Consulting, civil engineer.
So Emily, could you explain for the board your role with BXP and kind of a little bit of BXP's history associated with these types of life science projects?
Now, Greg, is she testifying as an expert, or?
She's not, Jerry. She's testifying as essentially the representative, not dissimilar to the testimony I would normally give if I wasn't playing attorney tonight.
So I am the project manager responsible for developing and completing the 105 Carnegie Center office-to-lab conversion. So some history about BXP and their life science platform. So BXP has been a national leader in the life science real estate world for the last 40 years. We did the first lab development in Kendall Square. We did NIH's headquarters in DC. And now we're trying to apply our knowledge and expertise in West Windsor. So central New Jersey was the obvious choice for our next lab development. It's already known as a hub for R&amp;D innovation in both physical and life sciences. It has an incredible talent pool. It's home to many research or academic research institutions. And most importantly, through conversations with the brokerage community, prospective tenants, and our own research, there is not enough premier lab space to meet the incoming demand. So by converting 105 Carnegie Center from an office to a lab use, we're going to be reducing this supply and demand imbalance. 105 Carnegie is well-positioned for lab, not only because, and it's highly attractive to life science companies, not only because it's in West Windsor, but it's also situated on a highly amenitized campus. A lot of scientists don't have access to amenities, which is important for their overall wellness. So all in all, the demand for lab space is ever increasing, and this will likely not be the last time we come to you to discuss a potential lab conversion or round-up lab development at Carnegie Center. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily.
Emily, and what's the company again? I'm sorry.
Boston Properties, but now we are known as BXP.
Yeah, she's with me. So Jerry?
This is the first lab in the whole Carnegie Center?
So, correct. So presently, we have a number of our existing tenants that are in the life science sector, but are using our spaces exclusively as office. This is the first time specifically that BXP at Carnegie Center is looking to convert some of its existing office stock specifically to a research and development lab use consistent with the zoning that's permissible. And, you know, what Emily's highlighting, the sense that a lot of times, these lab facilities and the prospective clients that are coming to us and looking for space are often just kind of on islands, right? And so the ability to have, you know, scientists are people too, right? And the ability for them to have access to our amenity spaces, our gyms, our cafes, you know, our green spaces, is attractive to the extent that we can incorporate BXP's expertise in doing kind of these urban suburban lab projects and bringing that to Carnegie Center. All of the great critical mass of the RFPs that we're receiving from various prospective tenants are in this sector. They include some component of laboratory space. Some are also looking at potentially full building spaces. So when Emily says that we're hoping that this is not the last time we're before this board talking about either a conversion or roundup development of a lab facility, you'll probably see us go live within the next day or so with a BXP Carnegie Center life science website. This is a full-court press by the company to bring life science laboratory projects to this campus and to this region because we think that West Windsor is the perfect place, right? It's situated so close to, you know, major universities, you know, it's one of the reasons why people want to be here. And so they want to come to Carnegie Center, they want to be here, and we think life science is the future. Office is still going to be the vast majority of campus. We still have a lot of our office assets, they are doing well, but there's not a lot of motivation to build new office buildings right now. That's why we came to you guys in July, looking to use some of our existing land stock to do kind of an exciting corporate suites project. And we're happy to say that that project's going to be getting off the ground very soon. And this lab conversion is kind of what we're hoping to be the first of kind of a new, you know, lifeblood and revenue stream for BXP at Carnegie Center. Yes?
My life science, you biologic a lot of the research?
Yeah, the market right now is mostly biotech, less chemistry.
You know, and we're not necessarily limiting ourselves just to one area, you know, physical sciences or another area, you know? We have, you know, such strong connections within the campus in terms of pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical, you know, fintech and other different types of businesses across our portfolio, but life sciences seems to be the biggest thrust right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. So my next witness is Michael Thomas from TNM Associates. He is our site engineer. Mike, I'm going to give you this.
Sure.
Michael, we don't have such of an audience tonight, so you might want to bring the images more forward.
Sure. Give it to him, Mike, whatever is easiest.
Can everybody just get right there?
No, we can't see.
No, you have to use the prop.
The public won't mind.
I could scooch this over. Yep, no problem. There we go. So counselor, Mike Thomas will be providing expert testimony, so I will present his credentials and ask the board to accept him. So, Mr. Thomas, I know you did so when you were sworn in, but please, just again, for the record, state your name and spell your last name.
Sure, it's Michael Thomas, T-H-O-M-A-S, from TNM Associates.
And if you'd please just describe your educational background?
Sure, about almost 20 years of experience in civil engineering, mostly focused on site development, land development, and water resources engineering. Graduate of Penn State University for my undergrad in civil engineering, and also graduated at NJIT for civil engineering, also for my master's degree.
And you are licensed in New Jersey?
Yes.
Licensed, Karen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You've previously testified before this board. It's specifically?
I'm sorry, hold on.
Yes?
If I have any issues with credentials, accept.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mike, if you would just kind of take us through the overall site plan and for the benefit of the board, just kind of give us a nice orientation of where we are and what we're doing.
Sure, and I'm going to have a couple of exhibits to hand out, a couple of handouts. That's great. All right, so the first exhibit that was sent out, and what's up on the top board here, is just a colorized aerial rendering of the project site. Not as impressive as our usual applications that we make with, you know, with a brand-new building and such. However, there are quite a few land development, I'll call it, matters that need to be addressed as part of this conversion. Those matters include parking, handicap accessibility, bicycle accessibility, landscaping, and then there's some new pads that are being proposed here with a variety of different uses, so I'll get into those in a few minutes. So as was mentioned here, what we're trying to do, what they're trying to do is take the existing building and convert it into a laboratory. The mix between the, from what is there under existing conditions from what is going to be proposed is a split. So there is going to be a small office component that's going to remain inside the building. It's approximately 20% of what the building is going to be. And then the remainder of it is going to be used for laboratory usage. What's kind of interesting about this, due to this conversion, and this is more of like a technicality, I suppose, but the floor area ratio or the square footage, gross floor area square footage of the building is technically going to be reduced by the definition of the West Windsor Township Ordinance Code. And the reason for this is because much of the space that is being repurposed inside the building is elevator space, mechanical space, things like this, which are not really typically included in the floor area ratio calculation. So we're actually going to be reducing the square footage of the building, even though the actual building is not changing in size. It's going to be the same. And there's a portion of it, penthouse, if you will, for mechanical equipment, which is being placed on top of the building. And that is just strictly going to be housing mechanical equipment for the purpose of the laboratory. There's quite a bit that's going on on the inside, in fact, much more going on on the inside than there is on the outside of the building. I'll let the architect discuss that when he speaks and give you a pretty big, pretty detailed background of what is being proposed and what is being repurposed. On the outside of the building, we were initially concerned about one major thing that was deficient under existing conditions. When this building was first constructed in 1980s, there wasn't a loading dock that was associated with it. So it was an office building without a loading dock, formal loading dock. Hasn't really caused, I think, an operational issue over the years as it was used for loading. However, you know, the ordinance has obviously changed over time. There's new requirements or more modern requirements for loading, specifically with number of spaces that are requested here. But we based our design off of what was necessary for this particular building. So the loading dock that is, that we're proposing, we're actually doing two of them. One of them is for deliveries. And I'll just say, these are just regular deliveries to the facility that come in day to day. It could come in, it could be an Amazon truck, it could be, you know, just a once-a-week type of delivery. We're expecting, there's going to be one to two possible delivery trucks on site a day, more along the lines of like a typical Amazon-style truck. And then there could be some other more specialized deliveries, you know, that are not associated with the laboratory, just regular mail deliveries and such, that could come as much as once per week or thereabouts. We have a secondary loading dock, which we are proposing. And again, what's interesting about these loading docks and what we're trying to do here is that we were very, very careful about disturbance on the site. We wanted to make sure that what we were proposing was not going to increase the impervious on the site. We wanted to keep the building, obviously, where it was, the existing parking that's there today. We more or less wanted to maintain it to the greatest extent that we could, but we also understand that the use is changing. With the use changing from an office to a laboratory, the requirement for the proposed parking for this facility is much less than the one it is under existing condition. So we have a secondary loading dock that we are proposing, and that one is intended for specialized, I'll call it, tank and pad refilling. So as part of this project, we have a few pads. The first one, which I'll say is on the most southern end of the, called southwestern corner of the site, is for liquid nitrogen storage. This is a more of like a vertical above-ground storage tank that's outside. Just immediately to the north of that is a proposed hydrogen tank, which is more horizontal. So it's more or less laying, you know, resting on the ground. The more vertical tank, which is the nitrogen tank, is taller, you know, can be upwards towards, we don't know the exact height just yet, but it's upwards, it could be as tall as 25 foot. So we're requesting consideration of that. The more horizontal tank, which is the hydrogen tanks, could be laying on the ground, those are not going to be taller than six foot tall, so that's, it'll be less than that.
Could you point those out?
Sure.
You were saying south, west, north, whatever.
Yeah, so on the exhibit that was handed out to everybody and was shown on the screen here, north is kind of to the right of the page. So on the, the hydrogen tank is on the north, I'll call it western corner of the site. And then to the southwestern corners is the nitrogen tank. And then?
You might be doing this later in the presentation, but since you're bringing up the tanks, I'll ask it now. You might be doing this later in the presentation, but since you're bringing up the tanks, I'll ask you now.
Sure.
Could you talk about the public protectives, the safety protectives at each of these locations?
Yep, and I will, I will provide that. Yeah, I'll provide that information as as I'm going through.
Yep, and you'll also hear from one of our architects in terms of some of the materials on the tanks and things like that. So yes.
You'll get back.
Cover. Yep.
And in addition to this, for the nitrogen tank, we have to have a special, more or less custom refilling station for it. So they have to be able to do that safely with the proper equipment. So we have another pad which is proposed. And just to give some more specifics to these things, the the concrete pad that the liquid nitrogen is settled on is a 20 by 16 concrete pad. The the hydrogen tanks are settled on a 33 by 13.5 foot concrete pad. The filling station is going to be situated on a 10 by seven concrete pad. And that's that's immediately to the south of where the nitrogen tank is. So it's like right adjacent to it. Just just immediately south. So if I'm sorry where I'm pointing on my. Exactly. So that the filling station, we're expecting this filling station and the equipment that's within it. They have to have a hose and a few other things to be no taller than 15 foot. It's the equipment that's inside of there is a little bit taller. So they have to have a specified height and we're requesting clearance of about 15 foot or so, vertical feet. And then in addition to this, for the normal day to day operations of the facility, we're going to have an outdoor hazardous material storage area. And that is going to be located to the, I'll call it immediate north and west of where the hydrogen tank is. So it's where my hand is pointing to right now. And that one is on a 10 by 15 foot concrete pad. That one's going to be a little bit taller as well. We're not anticipating it to be taller than 12 feet. But it's it's its highest point, but a lot of these storage containers for these cylinders, if you will, are vertical cylinders. So they have to have a housing unit that is compliant with all the safety regulations and such. So it's a little bit taller than other things. When we went through the the TRC process with all professionals, obviously some concern about some of the aesthetics that were out here. Mr. Dovolinski had suggested not using the the typical chain link fence. Call it a closure area around the periphery of these of these items. Generally speaking, for most other sites, they do want you to have the visibility to see these things, to notice, stay away from them, and to have the signage properly shown on there. So the chain fence provides that visibility. However, the aesthetics associated with this, there's no particular issues with us agreeing to Mr. Dovolinski's concern in providing what we have essentially, it's like a brown, almost almost like a board on board style fence, if you will, but yeah, similar similar to building to where it is over at building 104.
Right, so we're gonna, we're gonna do essentially what what Mr. Dovolinski had requested was we use materials and colors that are consistent with what is presently in the enclosures at 104 Carnegie Center, and we can we can meet that.
So we take no exception to that. We can certainly provide those those types of fences around the around these items. And then immediately to the north, we also have, and this is pretty consistent with the facility, similar to this, emergency generators. So there's two types of generators which are which are being proposed. One is on a 24 by 10 foot concrete pad. Another one is on a 34 by 12 foot concrete pad. One of the generators is a 400 kilowatt diesel generator, as well as a 750 kilowatt diesel generator. Both of the generators will have a sound attenuating enclosure around them. That's one thing that's important to to just remember about these types of closures. They're intended to be used for emergency purposes. So if power goes out, you're the sound attenuating closures are going to be designed to meet the NJDEP sound criteria at the property line. However, during emergency circumstances, those regulations are really not applicable. However, the these generators will likely be exercised once per month. So that's when that would come into play. It usually would be during the daytime, not during the nighttime.
Can you do gas generators?
So the for this for this particular application, the larger generator is for emergency.
Health, life and safety.
Health, thank you, health and life and safety purposes. And because of that, diesel is is pretty much required for that. However, that being said, there isn't an existing natural gas line that that runs through Carnegie Center East, or that at least is adjacent to here. So diesel is really the next best, you know, option for for a facility like this and given its constraints. So.
And I would just add that we are striving to achieve. Yeah. Lead certification, what level? What level? Capital C, lead capital C certified. So there are going to be a number of other sustainable initiatives going into the building. So that the kind of prohibitive cost of trying to run gas from across the other side of Route One to serve just these emergency generators, the diesel is generally the right way to go here.
So we have a application from Verizon several months ago where they requested a new diesel generator for their telephone switch in Washington, D.C. We approved that application. I'm wondering, is your diesel generator going to be like theirs in that it's a self-contained unit that includes the generator, the diesel tanks, and everything that's necessary for that purpose?
Yes, yes.
Yep. Yeah, the there's a couple of other permits that we have to obtain for this. One typically when we have a any kind of storage tank that is greater than 50 gallons, you have to have a spill prevention plan that's associated with it. So so that will be a one of the things that will be as part of this project, but necessary to 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 prepare. And then in addition to that, there is air quality permits that we have to provoke, we have to secure from NJDEP. So those things are are pretty typical for for diesel generators.
And we recognize that a condition of approval that would be imposed by this board would be the satisfaction of any of those third party approvals that be required.
It's going to be tested once a month, not once a week, right?
Yeah, once a month is more typical for for these types of units. But like I said, this is usually during the daytime. It's not usually done during the nighttime. And when, again, Carnegie Center is not a residential neighborhood, it's not a residential zone. Boston Properties does have contiguous ownership of all the properties that are around here.
And the, I guess, the emitting of the decimal testing to meet the, you know, standards. In an emergency situation, I understand, hey, you got you got to run your facility. But so one of one of the conditions should be that we it's tested for, you know, you're testing, and it's tested to make sure that it does meet that standard, right?
Yeah, it's very similar. A similar condition has been placed on Building 804 when we came in a few years ago.
Right.
And other other Boston properties. So I don't think.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all. There's there's probably four or five buildings on campus that have emergency backup generators. They all have that condition in terms of what meeting the requirements for required decimal.
I know there's no residents that are in the facility, vicinity, but still we should make sure that meets the standard. Thank you.
No problem.
Carnegie Center have any backup generators in any of its current buildings?
It does. There is a generator presently in Building 510. There's a generator presently in Building 206. And I believe there is a generator in one of the other, 211, thank you, which is and BioClinica Clario is in 211, which is probably the closest thing we have to kind of a life science company like what we'd be targeting here. And so the emergency generators are a critical component, given the type of research and development that's being done.
Is the generators you're proposing for this building the same as those other buildings?
I think they're actually probably more efficient and more modern. The generators that exist in the existing buildings are probably fairly old at this point. They may even predate the XP's ownership of them in some respects. So these will be much better.
Of course.
So as part of the other improvements that we're doing here, there is an existing generator, which is which is on the site to service an office use. We need to upgrade that for the new use that's coming in, different electricity, different power needs at the new for the new building. So we're looking to reuse an existing concrete pad where, and I'll just point to it on my screen, it's kind of centrally located in the rear of the of the existing building. There's an existing generator that is there, or transformers, yeah, sorry, thank you. Transformer. So they're looking to to upgrade that to a 25 KVA transformer. You know, over that existing, there is an existing PSENG easement, which is there today. So we're looking to keep those improvements within that existing easement. So sort of the domino effect of doing these improvements and putting in the loading areas. Again, the first, the first one that we're proposing is right adjacent to the building. There's existing parking spaces there today. So we're proposing a essentially elimination of those those existing parking spaces. But, you know, staying within the existing impervious that's there. The second one, which is going to be used to service both the nitrogen, liquid nitrogen and hydrogen tanks is located, I'll call it more on the the westerly side of the of the parking lot. And that one is going to be utilized in such a way as dual use where the truck can back in to either side of that loading area to service either either the nitrogen, liquid nitrogen, or the or the hydrogen. So as a result of losing those spaces, we and we have a reduced parking requirement that's associated with the new lab facility. We wanted to make sure that the front of the building, which is located on the more easterly side of the building, met the current code requirements for ADA accessibility and all the rest of this. So so we're restriping, I'll call it the parking area, which is just to the immediate east of where the front entrance of the building is. So that it has the correct number of ADA parking spaces that meet the current code requirements. And then we're also doing some of the improvements to the accessibility paths that are along the way to upgrade that, provide the proper ramps, and so on and so forth, and provide a clear accessible path inside into the building. But from a from a site plan point of view, we are playing a game a bit of, you know, I guess stealing from Peter to give to Paul, and that some of the areas where we are adding new impervious surfaces, like for instance, the the generators and also the, you know, the hydrogen storage tank. We're making up those areas by taking existing parking spaces and revegetating them. So so we're going to be adding more impervious surfaces than than the impervious that we're adding on the site. Everything's within the same drainage area, so all goes to the same spot. We are not proposing any new stormwater management BMPs as a result of the project. The project in itself is less than an acre of disturbance and less than a quarter acre of new impervious. So no new, no new stormwater management BMPs are being proposed here on the site, although we are increasing the the amount of impervious surfaces on the project. So I'm just going to give a quick background. I mentioned earlier about the FAR. So I'll just go over that real quick. So under under existing conditions, we have exact number, 69,648 square feet. And the number that I just read off to you was when this building was originally approved back in the 1980s. We are now moving to 58,458 square feet. And the reason for the reduction again is because of the new, I guess, the technicality of the of the regulations in West Windsor with regard to FAR. Mostly mechanical space, elevator space, and other things like this. So that's the reduction. One of the things that Boston Properties would like to do is to preserve that that I'll call it reduction, if you will, for perhaps another use or another application in the future where that FAR could be used elsewhere within the Phase One of Carnegie Center East. Another quick note about the called the equipment that's on the top of the building, the mechanical equipment. The penthouse itself and the height of that is also excluded from the, you know, from the height, building height calculation. So we're not really changing the height of the building, even though the penthouse is going on there technically. Just because it's that's the definition of of building height in in West Windsor Township, because it's being used exclusively for mechanical equipment and and things like this.
And our architect will present some elevation exhibits to show what those penthouses will look like, the materials that will be used. They'll provide some affirmative testimony regarding those things. You could see kind of how the building is changing, even though the height's not technically growing, how those penthouses will look.
Just to give a quick summary of the parking and loading and bicycle requirements. The required under the existing condition as as an office building, the required existing parking is 279 spaces, whereas 239 spaces exist there today. That's an existing nonconformity. On the bicycle space side, under existing conditions, 12 spaces are required, while seven are being currently, you know, currently at the site, which is also an existing nonconformity. Loading spaces two are required where zero are being provided today. Under proposed conditions, we are going to 100, 141 required parking spaces. And after the reduction of all the loading spaces and the new grass areas that we're proposing, we are now proposing 192 parking spaces. So because that the parking is changing from existing to proposed, we are requesting a waiver for that for that requirement. And the bicycle spaces that we have, the requirement for the laboratory again is 10, 10 bicycle spaces, whereas we are now providing 14 bicycle spaces on the site. And the loading spaces for for our, we calculate as being required, whereas we're providing two of them. So we're asking for a waiver for that as well. Quickly about landscaping, I'll just touch on the the safety requirements associated with the various tanks and everything. So we did during the TRC process, obviously, we met with Mr. Dovolinski. We talked about ways to improve the the buffering around the new equipment that is being proposed here. There is, there is a line of deciduous trees which kind of run around the periphery, mostly I'll call it on the southern and western ends of the lot. This is very consistent with much of Carnegie Center Phase Two, Carnegie Center Phase One on the east side. It's very, very consistent type of landscaping design that was that was incorporated there. Really, all that we're looking to do is to kind of supplement that, right? And to provide enough screening for the generators, provide enough screening for the nitrogen storage tank, the hydrogen storage tank, and the rest. Mr. Dovolinski had brought up some concerns about, you know, the point of view from Carnegie Center Drive, and also perhaps Route One. We do have an exhibit which was provided to everybody here.
Yep, so I'm going to hand that out right now, request that it be marked as exhibit A2. Let's mark that right now.
So what is being handed out right now is sort of like a photo simulation, if you will. So it's a perspective view from Carnegie Center Drive, looking in the northbound direction towards the site, more more specifically towards where like the nitrogen storage tank is is being is proposed to be installed. You could kind of see in the background, maybe it's a little harder to see on the exhibit that was passed out, but we had sketched in the, you know, about a 25 foot tall storage tank, which is being proposed there. We are proposing some additional evergreen shrubbery and plantings along Carnegie Center Drive. We can provide additional landscape landscaping as needed or as requested by Mr. Dovolinski if it's warranted. And but it just gives you a general idea of like what it would look like from from the Carnegie Center Drive point of view.
So
So, um, having perused the area, there really is a good tree line at the back of that parking. And I know it sort of goes around the bend of the road as it approaches the building. Are you proposing the elimination of any of those trees?
There's one tree that we're proposing to be removed.
Can you move the pad and save the tree? I'm serious because it is quite, I mean, this is, this has really been a bugger move from you on this, this application, a tree. But there, there really is good growth that's happening over the years and, and it's, it's consistent and it looks good. And I'd really rather you move a pad than, than remove a tree. Can't, can't you do that?
So Mr. Vice Chairman, we considered that extensively. We had multiple conversations, I think it was actually two TRC meetings to get through the process where we tried every which way possible without really having to reconfigure everything. And we did everything we could to mitigate just to that one tree.
Dan, do you have a response on this? You know which tree I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, I do. And I think that's why in my report I suggested that we ultimately need to put a field in the law to determine what can and can't be saved. So I think that's the best way to do it. We're not going to resolve a problem here tonight. And you're not going to resolve it, you know, whether it's 30 CR or what. You gotta get out there and state it out. So that's, because it's, the root of the tree, it's not, you can save a tree, but that doesn't mean you save a tree. So I think hopefully that's what I'm suggesting. So as we typically do before they start construction, we have to go over the limits of disturbance and what can and can't be saved based upon dimension.
And we have no problem with that.
Thank you.
So our ordinances allow the proposed nitrogen storage tank to be this high, 25 feet? Is that, is that in our code? And, and in this area?
Yeah, for, for an accessory structure, it's, it's permitted, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, everybody? Are there any?
There's a picture that Dan had articulated for us of the 104 screen there, and we would propose to match that material and... Is it, is it too dark? I can, I can grab, I have, I have a color gun with me. So I can...
Describe it.
What happened was Carnegie Center wanted to add a cycling area a hundred years ago, and as an issue, they located it in this location. We approved the metal sensors, it's not going to be included with the other Carnegie Center on the site. So that's what this is. And it's right, you can see pretty clearly there's property. So to me, being sensitive, it's just, we've got no choice to do that. So the tank will be taller than that, the ground level is all, I get to me here with the tank, it's how wide is the tank?
We don't know exactly yet, because, so yeah, the pad that is... It's a 20 by 16 concrete pad, so it's going to be somewhere in the range of like eight to 12 diameter.
And which tank exactly?
Yeah, like we mentioned.
Which is close to Carnegie Center.
That, I mean, when I, when I look at this picture, there's, there's parking that's close to it. So besides a chain link fence, are there any like bollards or anything, in case somebody loses control of their car?
Yes, yes. Yep, yeah, bollards, we are proposing bollards. And that was actually suggested by one of the review professionals during the last meeting. So we are providing, you know, concrete bollards. And I was going to talk about the safety requirements as well, so I could get into that a little bit, just to give you a little context with that. But on the landscaping side, we are proposing 38 evergreen trees and six additional deciduous ornamental trees along with this project. We're willing, obviously, to work with Mr. Dobremowski to massage that in any way necessary. And with regard to the tree that we are removing, we aren't, we did not put the pad in the location of that existing.
I'd like to say, say maybe removing.
That we will make our best efforts to preserve.
Maybe, maybe. But yeah, to, to Mr. Dobremowski's point, it's the tree roots that are the concern. So that's, that's, that was why we were suggesting the removal of it.
Do these exterior treatments conform to the Carnegie Center design standards?
They do.
Yes. So, and Mr. Dobremowski actually included this in his, his review comment letter to make sure that it, that the landscaping conforms to the ordinance requirements as well as the Carnegie Center 2 design guidelines. So, so we will make sure that that happens.
So in terms of the nature of the plantings, the consistency of how they are spaced out, how they will be used to screen, you might recall when we were before this board with respect to the solar projects that are directly adjacent to this property and how we are using end caps, all of the existing landscaping that meets those design criteria is being preserved to the greatest extent possible. And the new landscaping being put in is, is done in consideration and consultation with Mr. Dobremowski and with those design criteria.
Are there any signs, like warnings about the...
Yes, yes. Yes. Yeah, there, there will be, I think, more than a few, you know, along the periphery around the outside. And like I said, these are typically done with chain link fences. So there's, you know, there's usually one on each side, you know, of the fence. But yeah, there will be signs there, yes.
Is that a locked, I presume locked chain, right?
Yes.
Who has, who has the key, if there was an emergency fire or something?
So we can, we can provide some additional testimony with respect to that. But generally speaking, that all of these, call them kind of enhanced features, the nitrogen tank, the hydrogen tank, the storage shed for the other chemicals, are going to be pursuant to a health and safety policy manual and procedure by the lab. As Emily had mentioned, Boston Properties runs lab facilities, you know, across our portfolio. The tenants that we're going to be partnering with are all going to be seasoned lab providers. We will, as a condition of approval, provide copies of any health and safety manuals to the fire chief or any of the other West Windsor emergency response departments. But yes, all of these things would be locked, all of them are going to be secured. The frequency in terms of how the deliveries are going to be made with respect to any of these materials are not going to be on a fixed schedule. It's not something that you'd be able to track necessarily from a, from a safety standpoint. They're going to be on an as needed basis. And so the actual final detail of, you know, each minute piece of that health and safety plan, we couldn't share with you today because again, we're doing this on a speculative basis. But those are the types of things, we've taken into consideration, the comments of the engineer for the township, the bollards, locks, fences, signage, handling of any of these types of materials. You'll hear some additional testimony later from our architect and Emily will come up again with respect to how we're going to handle disposal of any material on site. So all of those things are taken into careful consideration in how this facility will be run. As we are a Class A office, we will be a Class A lab.
How do we know what's in the labs in terms of like, you know, chemicals?
So as part of the lease process, there will be an exhibit to the ultimate lease with what materials any prospective tenant can ultimately use in the facility, without having something specifically identified as, as a user. We don't know necessarily what those things are today. There's a defined universe of what they probably would do within the life science spectrum. They are technically categorized as hazardous wastes. That's why they're in a locked shed pursuant to a safety procedure. It is going to be a laboratory. So there is that element of it. But things like hydrogen, nitrogen aren't technically hazardous substances, right? So, and they're used, you know, I think immediately adjacent to this facility is the wound care, which has an oxygen tank, right? So we can't specify today what the materials are, but whoever the ultimate user is will be required to identify those things. They have to be cataloged in terms of the amount of material that's brought on site and the amount of material that is used. All of that is done to a very high degree of detail. It is shared and reported to the Department of Environmental Protection. And it is all, everything has to be accounted for down to the minute gram and milliliter.
So our code doesn't restrict what can go in the buildings, what kind of chemicals or what they're doing inside?
No.
Any animals going to be inside, mice or any?
No, we are not proposing a vivarium as part of this project.
Just a few other housekeeping items on the civil engineering side. The, we had our wetlands, our wetland scientists go out at the site just to, just to verify that the improvements that we're proposing are outside of existing wetlands and transition areas. So we provided an affidavit to, to our allocation package for that. We're also outside of any flood hazard areas on the site.
Mike, just so we don't lose sight of it, could you give a little bit of a testimony around the truck turning?
Sure.
And how the delivery process will work? That was one of the comments. We want to make sure we provide adequate testimony.
So what I have here is...
This will be applicant's Exhibit A3.
This was, this has already been provided to the board. It's Sheet 14 of 16 of the submitted site plan set. And then we, what we looked at was this point of view from, two points of view. First was the type of delivery truck that was going to be on the site to make the movements. And then secondly was the West Windsor Township Fire Truck to make sure it could make those respective movements. Interestingly, and again, you know, I know the code has changed, but the, the current layout of the building is, does not have the ability to accommodate the West Windsor Township Fire Truck to make a full circulation around there. So we are making some curb, curb adjustments to the existing parking lots, so, so that that can be made now to make a complete securitus movement around the periphery of the site. Sheet, Sheet 14 that's on here uses, exhibits the WB50 style truck, which is on here, which is what we're expecting for the deliveries and refilling of the nitrogen, hydrogen station as well as the, the hazardous gas containers as well. So that's why we're expecting them to be out there. So we have designed the, the truck turning movements around there and the curb cuts to match, match the WB50 more or less. West Windsor Fire Truck has roughly the same turning movement as a WB50, but we showed that template as well on here.
Exhibit A4.
Right. And then this one, this Sheet 15 is, is just another point of view of the WB50 movement, you know, moving through the site, but in a different direction. And then the last page should be the fire truck.
A5.
Which is Sheet 16, 16. And we took it from, from two separate locations to show that we can make movement and then exit back out onto Carnegie Center Drive. So, so the movements can be made that are on there with the, you know, I'll call it the curb improvements that we, that we were showing on site. It's a bit of an irregularly shaped parking lot. In fact, that is, that it's a triangle, but it does seem to work, which is good. And it sort of modernizes the facility to at least give it now loading docks that it previously or currently does not have.
Do you want to have Sheet 15 and 16 marked as a...
Sure.
A4 and A5.
So while you do that, a question for Greg.
Yep.
When we went through our community facilities element of the master plan, it came up that somewhere on the Boston Properties site, there is a, there is a designated site, question mark, for a future fire facility. Sam, am I correct on that? Is there, do you know that, Greg?
I'm not familiar with that, Vice Chairman.
Dave, does that sound familiar to you?
It's not impossible that it might be in the 400 series, which is presently under development.
So I believe when you refer to Section, Section 4.4, there was a study that was conducted back in 1998, and that study had recommended that a, oh, I'm sorry, let me backtrack. In 1998, there was a fire station location study that was conducted to determine if you were upgrading and or relocating west of the city's fire stations. I found that there are significant issues.
This would be in addition to our current locations, not in replacement of.
No, it would be a new location. While the study included a new substation, it may eventually be needed for additional coverage for increasing the amount of development along US Highway 1. However, such a station did not yet have been constructed. Recognize that the location is appropriate, but there's also staffing issues, which are pretty bad to that. So I don't think there's anything that was ever finalized for a location. I think it was a study that was conducted.
I thought it was mentioned, Carnegie Center.
It was, it was Carnegie Center.
You can get back to me on that, David. It's not essential right now, but.
It's certainly something we can discuss in the future, Vice Chairman.
Some, some of you have been around here a long time and remember the bridges over the railroad were the issue. And the upgrade of the Alexander Road Bridge, I think addressed a lot of that issue.
So the study had recommended that a third fire station be constructed at the time it says seven to 10 years in the future. So that would be mid 2000 or so, near the Carnegie Center site, specifically Carnegie Center West. That, I think, was just a recommendation of the study. So I don't believe there's any ever plans that were developed or a site that was specifically reserved for that type of construction. It was just the recommendation of that report.
And Sam, this is sort of an allied question on that, in terms of emergency access to this property or these properties at Carnegie Center. Do we know of any of DOT's plans to actually remove the traffic light at Carnegie Center Drive and US Highway 1?
There are no plans now. I understand there's, I think, TMA is involved.
Several years ago. For engineering reasons.
There is, I guess, if, one of that location, there's not, you have to build a warning to the drive so far you go up here.
No, but, no, but correct. If that, if they were doing a grade separated. Right. Was there a plan just to, because within the site distance at Meadow and at Alexander, you know, there's, there's grade separated. So they're, they're, at this point, DOT is going to keep it until we know, it's probably through our lifetimes. Okay, right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hey.
One question. How are these tanks refilled? Just by regular like a gas truck?
Can you repeat one more time?
How the nitrogen?
The tank, how the tanks are filled? So so we'll, we'll have our architect provide some specific testimony in response to your, your question, Mr. Mayor. But generally, yes, there's a truck that will come. It's a special, what special equipment?
30 minutes tops. That's, that's it. Yeah, yeah.
The truck itself doesn't have any special mechanism. It's just a regular truck that would come. And it's going to be smaller than a WD50.
Just to give everybody a little context about what's around the site, there is an existing heli stop, which is located to the, to the west of the site. One of the things that we were mindful of when we were laying out where these tanks were going to be located as well as the generators and everything else was making sure there was proper separation distance from, from all the various other uses around the site, including the daycare facility, which is nearby. But the, the one that seems to concern most people is the hydrogen tank. And we did do research, you know, with the current NFPA 55 regulations to make sure that we are meeting the minimum separation distances from the building, from the lot line, from the parking, where you're actually parking your car, from the heli stop and, and other things. And we do meet all of those minimum requirements for safe separation distance from, from the hydrogen storage tank. Include several, they call them exposure groups. And like I said, And like I said, includes everything from air intakes to parked, parked car areas, the building structures themselves, the hazardous material storage and the like. So we are, we made sure that we're laying this out in such a way as to meet those NFPA specific requirements.
So you're, you're saying that your hydrogen and nitrogen and hazardous tank storage and hydrogen and nitrogen filling stations are all NFPA approved and also OSHA approved?
So, so we haven't submitted to the NFPA or OSHA, but we are required to meet their, their specific regulations when we're laying it out. So, so to answer your question, yes, to meet their code requirements for safe, safe separation distances from, from those various pieces.
That would be a condition.
Yes. So it would be another one of the outside agencies, you know, in terms of all the third party approvals, whether it be DEP or OSHA or otherwise that we'd have to meet, but they were designed to meet those criteria.
And your, your filling stations are going to fill nitrogen as well as hydrogen?
Yeah. So to fill the tanks. So in terms of how they'll be piped from the tanks underground into the building. So in terms of how they're used within the building, it's going to come under it and it's going to go into the building. They'll be filled at the tank site.
Oh, okay. I.
Outside, yeah.
Yeah, and we're going to provide some additional color on that.
Okay, I was.
Yep.
My, my thought had been some, some person from the lab was going to go out to your tank and fill it.
No, licensed and certified delivery service will fill the tank at the filling station for the tank. For the lab technician's use of it, it is piped into the building and then they will utilize it in order course.
Turns on and off too.
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Of course. I apologize for the lack of clarity there. We, we were going to get to it, I promise.
And does that go for the hazardous gases as well? Or do the hazardous gases, the bottle gets brought into the lab and that gets?
So if, if you'd like for us to address it now, just because we're on the topic, I will bring Brooke Slocum up who can provide that testimony. He has been sworn in. So Brooks, I'll hand this to you.
Yeah, the two tanks, the nitrogen and the hydrogen will be filled professionally.
Hold on a second. Greg, why don't you put his credential before the board?
What would you like?
Your credential before the board.
Please.
Ebony and ivory. So, Mr. Slocum, can you please provide for the benefit of the board your educational background?
Sure. I have a bachelor's of architecture from the University of Southern California. And I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey, New York, New Hampshire.
And have you had the experience of presenting in front of boards similar to this one, but not necessarily particularly West Windsor?
Yes.
Is your license current?
Yes.
Thank you.
We ask that Mr. Slocum be accepted as an expert?
Accepted.
I would also just want to clarify specifically that your experience is in the area of designing these types of lab facilities.
Yes, yes. Currently, the firm, we have almost 10 million square feet of labs along the Massachusetts and New York and New Jersey areas. So we're very familiar with this type of building and this is a perfect candidate with the exception of the small triangular pieces, but everything else is a perfect candidate for life sciences.
Thank you.
The two questions I think you were asking were the nitrogen and the hydrogen tanks, those are only being filled by the licensed filler. They get locked, they are secured. Very few people have access to those. Then they're piped from those locations underground into the building, as you had talked about, they have manifolds, cutoffs. All the safety procedures are all part of the document, you know, the procedures that we've been talking about in NFPA. So they're very secure. Once they leave the tank, the tank is the only main place you'll have any large quantity of, of the gases.
With respect to the smaller hazardous materials that are going to be stored in the shed, can you just provide some testimony with respect to how do they get into the shed? How do they get from the shed into the facility?
Those again will be delivered in a truck that will unload them and lock them into that, the shed. There are going to be different types of gases depending upon the use or the need. Those that are all tagged and marked, those will then be used into the, they'll be brought into the lab as needed and set up in special tank rooms in the, on the floor for uses that could, that either pipe directly to the bench or be used in specialty rooms. Very, very standard procedure.
So just while we're on the topic of the handling and delivery of these things, I'm going to actually have Emily come back and she can provide a little bit of color with respect to how they're disposed of. And specifically the disposal of, call it the hard chemicals themselves and how, when they're rinsed and things like that, they're treated and then disposed of in terms of the sewer system.
Right. So the, the wastewater generated from the lab sinks through rinsing lab equipment like beakers and test tubes, that water feeds into our centralized onsite pH neutralization system before it's then discharged back into the Stony Brook Sewer Authority line.
And that would be coordinated.
That is coordinated. Well, a list of the chemicals being used in the lab and their, and determining their method of proper disposal is a process between the landlord and the prospective tenants. And a wastewater management plan is generated and that would be blessed by Stony Brook to ensure that we're meeting their guidelines. And so anything outside of that plan, so any waste that can't go down the lab sinks and into Stony Brook's sewage line after it's neutralized on site would be taken care of through a waste management plan. So any waste that can't go down the lab sinks would be containerized and transported offsite by a licensed hauler and that would go to a treatment facility and then would be disposed of accordingly. And so that waste management plan would be, would meet all DP and federal regulations. Again, a standard procedure that we typically see in every lab.
So that treatment facility is offsite. So if you were to think in terms of the bulk materials after they're used as part of an experiment, right? The vast majority of that material is discarded pursuant to this waste treatment plan into a containerized system whereby it's then picked up by someone and taken offsite. For residual material that is safe to be rinsed, it goes through a pH neutralization system. When it goes out to the Stony Brook system, it is clean water. It has been pH neutralized.
Sam, question for you on this, on this type of stuff that Emily's presented. Prior to actual operation of the facility, does the health department of the West Windsor Township have to sign off on any of this? Or do they have any review capacity on any of this?
It would go beside my rocks for the engineer.
Since. From an emergency services perspective, do you have SDS for each of the hazardous materials onsite and available for first responders?
Yeah, I mean, so they'll, all materials have to be documented and inventoried onsite. What?
I know. I just want, as part of the record.
Yes, I'm on the record.
You understand what?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, yeah, so, and we would certainly agree as a condition of approval to share that final health, life and safety plan with all of West Windsor's emergency services staff and with the township so that those plans for operator will be on file. So that if in response to any type of emergency, not only would those materials be available immediately onsite, but they would be on your records as well.
We've all been, been living through the COVID years, have something comes out, gets out of a lab and well, then the whole world, you know.
That's a, so legitimate concern, Board Member Givers. At the same time, I, again, I can't speak specifically to the type of work that's going to be done here. We don't have, you know, a tenant specifically identified at this time. We're doing this on a speculative basis. That type of facility, if they were handling those types of viral biologicals would be regulated by the CDC, they'd be pursuant to certain handling procedures. I can't say that that's not what we're proposing because I don't know. But if we were doing that, it would have to be regulated accordingly. And, you know, while I'm not aware of anything escaping in the United States, the regulations that we have in terms of our federal government and what needs to go into the monitoring and operation of these facilities, I could say with, with some confidence that I think it would be safe for this township. This would not be the only laboratory that's operating here. I don't know specifically, again, that we wouldn't be doing that type of work. I can't specify that.
We should have something in code or, or what to prevent something?
These are going to, these are going to be at the most BSL2 facilities, which are, the term is basically moderate agents that cause human disease. And moderate, they're only moderate hazards, so they're like studying AIDS is a, is a topic or making a chemical to cure. It's not, you're not going into the BSL3 or 4, which are much more hazardous that can spread. None of these chemicals can, are, are arrows that can be spread.
Can we have the condition that you're not going to be?
I don't think we would be willing to accept necessarily that condition on the, on the guise that, again, the intention here would be, you know, Boston Properties is, is looking to, we're not looking to weaponize anything. We're dealing with a caliber of tenant that ultimately is looking to improve the quality of life for, you know, you know, whether it be cancer treatments or, and if as part of those procedures, they might be dealing with a particular chemical that may be volatile, may be difficult to talk about. But at the same time, it's going to be something that is going to be handled with care pursuant to health and safety plan that is going to be regulated at all the levels of government, not just this board, but by the federal government, by the state government, by DEP. And so I don't want to sit here today speculatively stifling the potential for research and development opportunities that we might need to do for this particular facility, especially when they're not regulated by the township. There's nothing in your ordinance that would prohibit us from working with a facility like this, provided we meet all the regulatory schemes and regimes that are required to do so. We're not doing any manufacturing here. That's, that's not something we're going to be doing again. This is research. It meets local zoning. We're not going beyond the scope of what the R12 permits. I would just be hesitant to accept something that would restrict our ability to potentially develop and lease the facility if somebody came along that was working with the types of materials that you might be concerned about.
So it's a testimony, what did you call that? BSL?
SL2 is what we're currently designing.
BSL2, okay. So this is designed for BSL2, but not 3 and 4?
Correct. That's not what we're designing to, but again, if we came back to this board and we said, hey, we, we want to revisit our approval or something. We're not specifically regulating the use this evening. That's not what this application is. It's a minor site plan with variances. So the use that we're presenting in terms of a lab, so that designation isn't a limitation of what we're doing. Right? That may be what we're designing to, that may be the nature of the tenants that we're prospectively looking to lease to. But the scope of what the lab will do, provided it meets those local regulations, is not necessarily on, on proffer here. Again, we're going to be meeting your local zoning. We're not violating it. We're not asking for a use variance. There's nothing doing there. We're going to meet state and federal regulations. And again, the intention isn't to specifically do that, but to impose a condition that would prohibit us from doing that in the future would be potentially difficult.
Can you explain why you need two generators instead of one? I'm just wondering, like, are you planning on having two different labs or it's just one lab space or?
So that's a, so it's a fair question. So one is specifically dedicated to, so if you would imagine we're running experiments, right? So one of them is specifically for the health, life and safety operations of the, the facility. And the other one is for just maintaining the light switches and everything else.
So sometimes in these facilities, the, the researchers have, sorry, some experiments that if they lose them by, because of our, the cooling, the refrigeration, something goes off, it could lose millions of dollars and years and years of, of research. So the reason for having that as a separate facility and, and, and opportunity is just because it doesn't interact with the regular building, say, life safety. That's the reason for that. It, it is possible to do one, but this was much more of a clean approach where the building has its own life safety and then the researchers can have that much more dedicated facility.
So, Mr. Thomas, did you have a few more things that you wanted to cover? Yes?
So I know it's been mentioned already, but this project will have a health and safety plan associated with it. As everybody can imagine, Boston Properties already has one in place, but this is going to be enhanced now for, for the tenant that comes in. Obviously, the tenant is going to have their own specifications when they come in that are more specific to their, their needs. So it will become enhanced for sure. But regarding the operation of the building, we are, you know, we, we, we need to be compliant with the OSHA standards that are, that are available. And I'll just read off a few of those just for everyone's awareness. OSHA standard 29, which in the regulations is 1910.1200, has to do with hazard communication. And that really pertains to the labeling of containers, the availability of safety data sheets, the training for the workers, the hazards associated with the chemicals, including nitrogen and others. There's also OSHA standard 1910 dot 1450, which has to do with the occupational exposure to hazardous chemicals and laboratories. So it's, it's for the scale of the workers using hazardous chemicals in a laboratory setting. And then there's also OSHA standard 1910.101, which deals with compressed gases. And this one more focuses on the requirements for safe handling and the use of compressed gases, including nitrogen. There are more specific requirements that are associated with both nitrogen and hydrogen. Regarding nitrogen, there's the OSHA publication for the laboratory safety, cryogens and dry ice quick facts sheet. And that has to do with the safe handling and use of liquid nitrogen. Then there's the OSHA letter of interpretation, which provides guidance on whether inert gases on the non-compressed state represent hazardous chemicals. Regarding hydrogen, there is several requirements as well, which include 1910.103. And then having to do with hydrogen leaks. There is a publications that are, that are available out there associated with, you know, lessons learned from a hydrogen explosion or something similar to this, if, if something were to happen. All of these items that I just mentioned would be covered in the health and safety plan that would ultimately be developed for the site. It's important to remember that a health and safety plan is a living document. It's always going to be approved upon depending when, when the regulations change. Some of the other things that Boston Properties has in their current health and safety plan include an emergency response plan, hazard communication plan, annual life safety training. Other, I'll call it audits and other mechanisms are also built into that. And then I'll just briefly just, just touch on some of the potential gases that could be located within, I'll call it the hazardous gas outdoor storage area. I know that was a question on one of the review letters. Some, some of the cylinders could contain things like helium, silane, oxygen, hydrogen, nitrogen, carbon dioxide, ammonia, methane, chlorine, silicon. I'll get that right, tetra chloride. And, and others as well. So those are, those are the types of gases that would be containerized, you know, within, within that storage area.
All those materials would be catalogued, documented and tracked in terms of all of their usage, what comes in to and out of the site.
Tried to answer as many of the report questions as I could, but if anybody has any questions.
So are there any other questions for Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Thomas, just a quick question. On your work product page 14 that you referred to earlier, the WB50 truck exhibit. Yeah, Mr. Thomas, just a quick question. On your work product page fourteen that you referred to earlier, the WB fifty truck exhibit. I understand most of the reference, so what's the lock to lock time? And what is six next to that?
Say one more time, what's a?
Lock to lock time. What does a six point zero mean?
A lot of time.
Bottom right.
Oh, yeah. So so those are just the specifications for the actual template that is being used for that.
I believe what it means is it takes six seconds. If the wheels turn all the way to one side, it takes six seconds to turn all the way to the other side.
So it's second.
Anything else for Mr. Thomas? Okay, we're going to bring Mr. Slocum back up. He will provide some testimony with respect to the the elevations. We had talked about some of the screenings on the penthouses. So.
Hi, I'm just going to give you, I think it was discussed earlier how little of the building we are going to be touching from the exterior. Most of the work we're doing is in board and on the roof. And what we are proposing, there is a current screen at this at the that houses a penthouse, but it's quite a bit smaller on this building. And what we're proposing to do is match the shape of the triangle building with a penthouse that has interior and exterior space. So our mechanical equipment will be housed in the interior penthouse that you can see here. And then there's a screen that matches that wraps the the building around. And on these lower images here, you can kind of see where all different angles of the building.
A six and this will be a seven.
These show the extent of what we're we're going to be building out. They're set back from the facade, but they are high enough to hide to shield all of the equipment. This particular penthouse is up on Dunage because the existing roof is just a trust frame roof. So all of this is a new platform above the existing roof and on the columns that we're hitting the exact column location so that we can post up on that. So the foundations are strong enough, the steel is strong enough. We just didn't want to rest anything on the existing roof. So this has a kind of a cleans up the building a little bit to some degree. With the only intervention currently, there's a big wing wall that goes from one end to the other on the diagonal. And we're cutting that in half and filling it with this new penthouse.
Mr. Slocum has testified. So like the type of material that we're using, why the colors are chosen, sort of the texture associated with.
It's a, it's a horizontal metal panel for the majority of it where we need louvers. They will just be in line with the horizontal panels. And the gray is kind of a nice way of making it feel less less attached to the building to some degree, but it makes the the face of this campus building stand out a little bit more, which we know this is the look that our campus was designed around and we're have to work for it.
Yeah, it's intended to be a feature, not a bug.
Right. Yeah, exactly. There are a few pieces of equipment, the fume hood exhaust that may protrude through it, but that's only on the inside that you see that. These are not our best renderings, but this is a little bit more in keeping with the way it will feel when it's up. That's the, you can kind of see more here. When we have louvers, there'll be something like that. So it's a, you know, it's a very clean use of this existing building, we think. I'm trying to keep within the the character of the Carnegie Center Campus.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum. Does anyone have any questions for for Mr. Slocum?
You said they'll be, I don't know, exhaust.
Just in one, just so as as part of a life science building, you have fume hood exhaust, which are the chemicals. Those particular cannon fans are a little bit taller than everything else. All you see are the just the the stacks, a little bit higher than this screen wall. We just won't want the screen wall going too high. They're, I think they're a couple of feet, but they're just like smokestacks. But they're painted the same color and they're big in most of our buildings. They're kind of a little tiny feature that says, yes, we're doing life science here.
They'll meet all the codes for venting.
I'm sorry.
They'll meet all the codes for the.
Yes, of course. Most definitely. They are the leaves these, those fume hoods are sometimes cleaner than most air you would get from an exhaust system from a building. So that's the 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 beauty of life sciences, everything, I think, as we talked about with all the chemical waste is cleaner. The water going out of this building and the air leaving it will be cleaner than the air that's typically in a in a regular office building. That's existing. Yeah. So we're, it is, it's. Yes, it is. It's one of the features of the big diagonal brace wall that is part of that architectural style from the eighties. I'm sorry. No, it's actually empty. It's just a an empty screen wall. It's when you look at it from, if you're up on site, you can see it. It's just a
It's a fin.
A false wall. I'm surprised too when I finally looked at it properly. But you know, this is, this is the back of the building as well. So the main entrance is is more where the diagonal piece is here. This is the main entrance here.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum. Anything further for Mr. Slocum? And I'll call my last witness, which is Mr. Flynn. He is our planner. Mr. Flynn has not been sworn in, so we will swear him in and we will voir dire. So you can stand over there. Want to use the board there? Okay, that's fine. You can use your mic there. So.
If you could raise your right hand. You swear over here. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Matthew Flynn, F L Y N N.
Matthew is first.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Flynn, can you please provide for the benefit of the board your educational background?
Sure. My education comes from Rutgers. I have my master's degree in planning and public policy. I have my professional planners license in the state of New Jersey, as well as my AICP certification, which is the national licensure for planners. And I've testified before dozens of boards across the state.
Is your license presently current?
They are.
I would ask that the board accept Mr. Flynn as an expert in the area.
Any issues? Accept.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Flynn, we are requesting a number of design waivers. Why don't we begin with the waivers and then we'll cover the variances?
Sure. So I think the design waivers test is a much simpler test, it's a much simpler proof than the C variances. In terms of design waivers, we are requesting a waiver for a number of parking spaces. One hundred forty one spaces are required. We're actually proposing more than that at one hundred ninety two spaces. As I understand it, we do technically need that design waiver because we are changing the parking. But again, we are proposing a adequate amount of parking per the township code.
And that is ordinance section two hundred dash twenty eight D point two B.
Right. And the second design waiver is for a number of pervious parking spaces. Sixteen pervious spaces are required, whereas zero pervious spaces are proposed. That's the same as existing. I think that we have already heard that impervious coverage is going to remain exactly where it is today. We're not actually expanding the development footprint. So that is a an existing condition, but I would call that a new design waiver again, because we are changing the the parking configuration slightly.
And that's a waiver request from ordinance section two hundred dash twenty seven capital P.
Correct. And I would say that all of that can boil down to section fifty one of the municipal land use law, which sets forth the criteria for relief from design waivers. And I would say that this satisfies the the lower standard of impracticability or reasonableness. In this case, stricter literal enforcement of these design waivers would not make any planning sense. Again, we are proposing an adequate amount of parking spaces per the code. And in terms of those pervious spaces, again, that's an existing condition. And we're not necessarily expanding the development footprint per se. So with that, I can just jump right to the C variants.
There's a couple of more waivers. I want to make sure we get them all on the record. So ordinance section two hundred dash fifteen point C two C. This is where a survey map prepared by a licensed New Jersey surveyor is required, existing plan, conditions plan has been provided and signed by a New Jersey licensed engineer. That's the plan that you received from Mr. Thomas.
These are submission waivers and not the sign.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. Figure I just get them all on the record. Ordinance section two hundred dash fifteen C two D, where a copy of the deed or onsite easement is required. The deed references have been provided on the site plan for the existing onsite easements. Ordinance section two hundred dash fifteen C two capital F, where the location of wetlands is required. You heard Mr. Thomas identify that a wetlands affidavit has been provided by an environmental scientist indicating a no wetlands assist on the project site. And then ordinance section two hundred dash fifteen C two capital M, for the location of all utilities is required, existing stormwater utilities and closed electric utilities are provided. I think the only other we cover ordinance section two hundred D twenty seven D one two for the off street loading.
That is a C variant, is it not? Or is that a design?
That's also a design waiver.
Well, in that case, I'll just touch on that briefly, to the extent that I could touch on number of parking spaces. The same criteria applies for the the loading spaces. Currently, we have zero loading spaces on the property and we're proposing two. But because of the change in use, the the loading space requirement is also going up. So we're still, we're still requiring that that design waiver. But again, it's an improvement over what's there, whereas again, now we have zero loading spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. So yes, would you please proceed to identify the C variances that we're requesting and the proofs required to justify them?
Sure. So as we already heard, we're not requesting any D variances. We are in the ROM two zone for the research office and manufacturing zone. We're not requesting a use variance. The use complies, FAR complies and height complies. We're simply here requesting C relief for setbacks, the first of which would be the front setback. One hundred and twenty five feet is required. Seventy eight point two feet is proposed for the filling station and eighty eight feet is proposed for the nitrogen storage tank. Side setback, forty feet is required, whereas thirty three point four feet is proposed for the filling station. Twenty seven point four feet is proposed for the nitrogen tank. And thirty one point three feet is proposed for the hydrogen tank. Your planner has done a nice job at outlining what the what the statutory criteria are in his in his planning report. And I would say that these two variances are satisfied by both the C one and the C two test. In terms of the C two test, all of the all of the C variances, all of the benefits of same substantially outweigh any detriment. We heard from our first witness, Emily, regarding all of the project positives that this is going to bring forth. Modernization of the site, site upgrades that can accommodate several beneficial uses that were again outlined by our previous witnesses. Allowing the site to stay up to date in regards to current trends in the market. Allowing the site to attract a high quality tenant. Staying within the existing impervious coverage, not expanding the scope of development, making that curb adjustment to accommodate fire safety. And as I, as I just went through, improving the the parking situation by bringing that into compliance. Improving bicycle parking, as was testified by our engineer. And adding loading spaces where currently there are none. All of the above satisfy purposes of of zoning per the municipal land use law, including purpose A, promotion of the general welfare. Purpose G, variety of uses in appropriate locations. Purpose I, desirable visual environment, as well as purpose M, efficient use of land. I think that really the essence of what we're proposing tonight really comes down to the negative criteria. I think the board has done a, has asked all the right questions in regards to the potential detriments or the impacts to the township, to our neighbors, to the zone plan. I think that there, at this point, there are no outstanding questions. But in terms of that negative criteria, we just heard, we just put on the record all of those layers of protection that are built into this type of use. We meet separation requirements to the extent that we are, we are requesting a setback relief. We meet separation requirements per the NFPA, supplementing the existing landscaping. So again, to the extent that we do need setback relief, we do have an existing buffer that we are going to make even better. Again, as I stated, even though we are proposing some additional structures, impervious coverage will remain unchanged. Stormwater management will not be adversely affected. And this will actually help the use be even more compatible and consistent with the intent of the zone plan by against allowing the site to stay current and delivering a beneficial use that's in line with what the zone wants. And I'll just note for the record that the setback requirements, I think that your planner mentioned this. The setback requirements are the same for principal buildings and this accessory structures. So of course we are requesting the the C relief. I I just want to make sure that the board understands that that those setback requirements are the same setback requirements that apply to a three story building with point three FAR. So the same setback requirements apply to these these small tanks that we're proposing as would apply to to a much larger building. As I said, the application also satisfies the C one hardship test whereby the relief doesn't relate to oversized structures. I think one of, I think it was actually your planner again, who mentioned that the the height limitation for accessory structures is the same for principal structures. So technically, we would be allowed accessory structures that go up to forty five feet high. Of course, we are well below that, but I just say that to say that the relief that we're requesting is for is not for overly sized structures. It's really relative to the location of those structures and the placement on the site of those structures, which is a function of where the existing building is today and making use of the existing site improvements and finding a reasonable place for that. So to that end, I think that the C one hardship test is also met. The applicant doesn't have to satisfy both, but I think that in this case, the applicant does. All said, I think that I'll wrap up and if the board has any questions.
So I would just say, so Mr. Flynn, in your expert opinion, you would say that the requested variances in design waiver should be granted?
Correct.
That the benefits of granting these, in your opinion, outweigh the detriments?
Yes.
And that the compliance with the ordinance requirements we are seeking for these design waivers would be impractical. You have the literal interpretation.
Absolutely.
Is there any questions for Mr. Flynn?
Just a quick question. You're reducing square footage. You're holding on to it, but in terms of the use, so if you're proposing one hundred ninety two parking spaces, right now you have one forty one. So why do you need fifty one more spaces?
So the the actual square footage in terms of the the leastable square footage of the building is not changing, right? We're not actually changing the footprint of the building in any way, shape or form. The literal definition of floor area under your ordinance removes certain pieces of what otherwise, when they were originally office, were considered floor area. And so that's why from a purely statistical perspective, the number is decreasing from a floor area calculation standpoint. Now, with respect to the parking, which is a little bit of a different question. Because the nature of the use, having gone from one hundred percent office, which had our existing parking number to going to this hybrid use of office and lab, laboratory requires more space for less people, which means you don't need as many parking spaces. So we, in order to balance the site, are removing some of the parking spaces in order to revegetate them to find that balance in terms of the impervious surface. In terms of removing more of those parking spaces, we don't ultimately want to do that again to preserve the flexibility with respect to the building itself, such that while we're requesting it be converted to this hybrid office lab. Again, you heard it could be anywhere from twenty percent office up to forty percent office. If we went to that that forty percent office, again, we need that parking, right? So it gives the ultimate flexibility for the site. And to the extent we're a campus, and so having additional parking on site while still balancing the earthworks there to preserve that impervious calculation. We may have a tenant who would come in on a basis where they're taking additional office space, say, in building one oh four, directly adjacent to. Directly adjacent to building one oh five. And they may have their people that park in that lot, they may have people that park in this lot, they may go between both buildings as they're utilizing the lab space and utilizing space. One of our adjacent buildings. So maintaining that parking is critical. To kind of the overall approach to how we're going to leave space on campus. Well, they're already existing, so we'd have to rip them out. That's, that's correct, but, but the spaces are already there. So we'd have to rip them out and then you'd be banking them to put them back in later. That would be a significant cost expense to put back something in that we already have. So your, your waiver that you're requesting. Is to some extent because of an existing conformity, you have too much parking. Normally you require a variance when you don't have enough parking. You have too much parking again because it's existing. So the expense added to a project that, you know, is already difficult, given how expensive it is to do the conversion. Would be adding expense to remove something that we actually want. Then we may have to put back in again in the future. Right, so we are reducing the number of parking spaces. Overall, we wouldn't want to reduce it any further than we are in order to accommodate the site to make it work.
I think what's throwing everybody off is that you didn't give us that two thirty nine number. Now that we know there's two thirty nine, you can reduce the one ninety two with a requirement of one forty one. You know, that makes sense. I guess I didn't get it either that how we go into one ninety one and okay.
Yeah, I apologize.
No problem.
Counselor, would it be helpful for the purposes of. The board, if I just specifically enumerate the sections for the variances, do you need those specifically identified? I think I handed you.
I don't think you need to do so.
Understood. All right. Is there any other questions for Mr. Flynn? Thank you. That will conclude our case in chief this evening. I just respectfully request that the board consider this application for approval. We obviously remain here for your deliberations and any questions that your professionals have as they review their reports.
We're gonna listen to our professionals.
Yep.
And then we'll make our decision.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Who wants to go first? David?
Good evening, everybody. Just for the record, this David Novak, with Burge Association, as such a planning consultant. We had a memo that was dated April twelfth, two thousand twenty three. The first couple pages of that memo are more information, a brief recap of what we're proposing. Where we are in our master plan, what is only district ERA, and again, I believe we had raised a decision to reduce use. Regarding the planning review, which begins at page four, we did have some questions regarding the operation. Applicant did provide a full view of that, as well as some information regarding the delivery schedule. Some of the more specifics can't be provided at this time because there is not a tenant that's selected yet. The next section dealt with the generators. I believe those questions were addressed. Specifically regarding the generator, I was most interested in the landscaping aspect of this. Obviously, they will have to satisfy this, but those landscaping comments on that. Satisfaction of those comments will also go a long way to addressing the negative criteria with those variances, because again, those generators do require variance relief. Page five dealt with storage areas. Quite frankly, my biggest interest was in safety and security as well. The applicant did provide that information. There will be a lot of checks and balances with these proposed improvements. Everything else, essentially dealing with parking, loading and circulation and building improvements, the applicant has addressed as well. So as of right now, I don't have any additional questions. The interesting aspect of this lot is that. It is surrounded by other properties which are essentially owned by Boston Properties. If you look at the lot line arrangement in the area, to use a not so harmful description, it's like a bunch of spaghetti thrown against the wall. So the lot lines, while not saying they're arbitrary, they do occasionally cut through accessways, other property areas. So regarding the setback lines, I was not necessarily too concerned about that. It does have substantial buffering from US rule one. And I believe that the landscaping that they're proposing will provide some. Softening specifically along Carnegie Center Drive, and I think that's Carnegie Way.
David, I have a quick question on the setbacks, right? The setbacks from the tanks in general, right? Those are to other Boston properties, correct?
That would be to the Boston property lot line, yes.
Okay, so I'm not, okay, I'm good.
Yeah, it wouldn't be from a, there's two ways we can measure setbacks. It could either be from an individual lot line, which is what we're applying in this case. Or it can be from a tract boundary line. Sometimes we do that in, say, our redevelopment plans.
Right.
We're envisioning condo lines in there. This is more the former, the traditional aspect of it. This is being developed today and in zoning order to be prepared. We probably look at it another way, setbacks, roadways, but that is directly for those individual lot lines.
Okay, if it was a residence forty feet away, then, you know, I'd be more concerned. But since it's, you know, off, you know, other commercial property. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Do we have in code? Because this is going to be a mixed use life science slash laboratory building. So what life science means, do we define that anywhere in code?
I don't believe that is. I could do a quick search right now. No, no, it would not be fine. This would generally fall under what we'd call research, testing, analytical and product development laboratory. So this would be essentially a research laboratory. And the applicant did specify that there will not be doing any manufacturing. That's essential because two hundred dash two eleven A one discusses that. You can't have manufacturing, sale, processing, warehouse, distribution. Or fabrication of materials, products are good, except as incidental to the principal permitted uses. So we don't have a definition of life sciences, assuming that's more of an industry term. Nothing in our zoning goes without that.
Do you have a definition that you can provide us?
So again, I would want to emphasize that we're not limiting ourselves specifically to life sciences, so physical sciences. Again, the ultimate user of the laboratory space, whether they were. I'm trying to think of a specific example for what would quantify as life science. Right, so they could be researching anything, right? Yes, so and it's, and it's more in the, in the biologicals, right? So we're not, again, we're not making. Trying to think of the best way to describe it.
I don't want to make Wikipedia to go through source, but I do have a Wikipedia page that provides a little bit of guidance on this. Essentially would be. The branch of science that involves the scientific study of life, such as microorganisms, plants, animals, beings. It does give some branches of basic life science that include biology. Anatomy, astrobiology. Bacteriology, biotechnology, biochemistry. Bioinformatics, and there's a whole other list that goes all the way to virology, boy, and zoology.
But again, we're not proposing a vivarium here. There's not going to be live animals. That's an important distinction.
Know a boa infected monkey to escape?
No, so there will be no animals. Although I, again, I will point out. The township's ordinance does not prohibit a vivarium. So if that were something that we were looking to propose, we are, we are not. But again, it's not prohibited.
Well, Craig, you said no live animals. Is there any possibility they're going to bring in dead animals to?
So I would imagine, counselor, that cultures, you know, things in petri dishes that may include some form of tissue. You know, whether they were working with something like HeLa cells, which can be used through CRISPR to do genetic research. Which is, you know, instrumental to all of the therapeutics that you're seeing today in terms of curing terrible diseases. That are improving our quality of life every day. So those types of materials in terms of on the cellular basis, certainly probably a possibility, right? Those are the types of things they do research on, but again, no live animals.
Jared, we don't, are you saying we don't need anything written anywhere as to. What they can or cannot do, or it's just leaving an open book?
I think it would be very hard in doing so. Obviously, Boston Properties has made it clear that they don't want any limitations on.
So again, I think we could, we would agree that we're meeting the definition in your ordinance of what's permitted in the zone. So Mr. Novak read for you what the definition of laboratory use is. That's what we're doing.
Okay. Any more questions for David?
And David, you don't have any recommendations for conditions in your memo, correct?
Only the, only the conditions that are discussed so far, I feel, are the right list. There's nothing in my memo that has specific conditions.
Yeah, David, this is for you, and it really has very little to do with your application, but just for our application. I know you work in several markets. Historically, offices always had, office space has always had a four spaces per thousand. Medical, five per thousand, industrial, two, maybe two and a half per thousand. What are you seeing as, again, not with reference to this particular application, but what are you seeing in life sciences as the new standard, the new norm?
West Winter is probably one of our more. Advanced and sophisticated markets I would work with. I'm not just trying to, you know. Being very serious, a lot of the towns that I've personally worked with. Say Bergen County has some older industrial areas where, or older office spaces where they're either being. Multi-family uses or, or. Retrofits of old industrial spaces. So regarding the parking central life sciences, I haven't had too much experience with that, to be honest. Generally across the board, we have seen parking standards for office spaces in general decrease. And one of the reasons for that is the way that office parks were designed in the eighties. And a lot of them were designed with storage in them, storage of a lot, a lot of space. We've seen that aspect of the office market change a lot, especially with new technologies. So now interior utilization of the space has changed. So where areas that were once utilized were storage areas are no longer necessary. And people are required for making those, maybe not as many as were required. Sometimes those areas became a place of many expenses. So we are seeing a shift in office space parking requirements, but it's still kind of playing out and it's still very much on a case by case basis.
Sam, don't we have that facility in the Black Rock campus? They do that.
They do more genetic research?
They were working on pancreatic cancer.
Correct, and they have clean rooms and it's similar to, came in front of the board in a.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the similar facility.
Anybody else? David? Okay, who wants to go up next?
Yeah, my name is Mohammed Alzal. I'm actually filling for the Kazimassul today.
Can you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Mohammed Alzal, and I'm filling up today for the Kazimassul. He briefed me about this applicant's plan that was submitted. Yeah, we reviewed these plans and we had raised two questions back in November fourth, twenty twenty two. And those two comments were actually addressed by the applicant. And that was confirmed on the April third, twenty twenty three memo. And those are fully addressed, so we are okay with that. No more questions.
Anybody? Questions? Okay. What's up next? For the round table.
Dan Dobermelski, my report was April twelfth, two thousand and three. There were five comments. All of them have been discussed or addressed in some way this evening. Comments number one was just saying the generator has been screened appropriately. Number two was asking for testimony, which they provided due to this evening. And three, four and five dealt with the enclosure. The additional, some additional landscape that to meet the code and guideline, design guidelines. And the final number five was the field review. Of construction relative to existing landscapes so that we can make sure that we preserve as much as possible. So conditions, comments three, four and five, I would think would be conditions based upon the presentation and testimony this evening.
Three through five?
Yes, correct. Okay, the applicant's okay with that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, no problem with the condition to field verify and coordinate with the landscape architect to ensure compliance.
Any additional questions for Dan? Okay, moving right along.
Hi, Ian Hill, Bank Cliff Engineering, filling in for Francis Guzik tonight. Referring to his memorandum dated April twelfth, two thousand twenty three. First of all, we take no exception to any of the requests for submission waivers.
Again?
The submission waivers, they request that we don't take, we take no objection to any of them.
Okay.
As for the design waivers, I mean, that's up to the board prerogative. Couple of things, on page two of three, under section one point zero four. They haven't provided detailed grading information for the newly relocated handicap spaces. So they need to demonstrate with survey information that there's an accessible route to the building and that the, the parking spaces themselves are compliant.
So that'd be a condition?
That would be a condition, please. Thank you.
And the applicant has no problem meeting that.
And one other thing, through the TRC meetings, I don't believe that we ever saw utility lines being run to the building from the tanks, the hydrogen, the nitrogen tanks.
Yeah, the, the underground lines that are running from the tanks to the building, we'll show those on the plans.
You will, but they're not on the submission that we got.
Correct, yes.
Okay. That should also be a condition, please.
Is that a, is that a numbered condition in your?
No, that just came up during the course of this meeting. That wasn't in the report.
Yeah, counselor, so that would be a condition of approval to add detail to the plans to reflect the underground piping from the hydrogen, nitrogen storage tanks to the building.
Partial condition under one point zero nine is that the applicant should provide approval from Stony Brook related to their wastewater discharge. Prior to getting a certificate of occupancy for the laboratory use.
And we accept that condition.
Under paragraph one point twelve. The applicant needs to obtain the permit from the fire marshal because of the three hundred and sixty gallons of diesel fuel storage.
And we accept that condition as well.
And lastly, under paragraph one point fourteen, there's some minor issues with the signature blocks on the site plan cover sheet that have to be addressed.
We'll make sure we address them.
And Ian, what about one point eleven? What about one point eleven?
One point eleven? I thought they pretty much addressed that during testimony, but. And the fact that they need to obtain air quality permits from NJDEP, you can add that to the conditions. Yeah, thank you.
That's the. What about one point oh six with the electric vehicles?
That was just a, a statement of fact. There wasn't anything they needed to do for that. Because they're not seeking preliminary approval, it's a minor site plan approval, that ordinance doesn't apply to this development. This application.
Do you have electric vehicles for this building?
So presently, directly adjacent, if you were to refer back to A one. Building one oh one has four chargers, so eight heads, which is directly adjacent to this building. Given our current occupancy, those chargers are not generally used at all times. So anybody occupying building one oh five would very, very comfortably, very, very easily be able to access those chargers, which are actually located right here. In terms of further electrification for vehicles, we appreciate that that's the future. I myself drive an electric car. As part of transactions and deals, as tenants request them, we are putting them in, we do have them. We do have them interdispersed throughout the campus in presently six buildings. And obviously, we would comply with the law. If we were doing a new development, we would have to put them. Keep them away from the hydrogen tanks.
Simon, you have a question? The only other question I have is with Chief Lynch's report. He doesn't have any comments. I guess he was satisfied in those earlier meetings on this application. But he usually talks about having transmission capability of their radios inside their buildings. Now, in your office park, that part may be perfect for him as it exists today.
And so all those procedures.
The lab facility, whether that would prevent any of those transmissions.
So we would be working with the chief, just like we do with, as part of our generalized health and safety procedure. This is still going to be a Carnegie Center building, so it'll work more or less in the same way that our other buildings do on campus. And I think Chief Lynch was just generally satisfied with how the operation runs.
Okay, and he also usually asks for lock boxes on?
I believe they're already there and they'll remain.
Great. We covered all our professionals. Anybody have any additional questions or so on?
Was there anything, when you talked to Chief Lynch or anyone dealing with EMS about the chemicals, what's going on in the labs? Is there any special?
Nope, there was no.
Women should have?
That's why I asked about the SDS. Because when you go to a laboratory in an ambulance and you have someone who's been exposed to a chemical or chemicals, you want to know what chemical or chemicals they've been exposed to and what the treatment is for those chemicals. And if you can take that SDS with you, with the patient, to the hospital, it's best for the patient.
That's right, and so those would be both onsite and be provided to your emergency response teams to keep on file with their other ones that they may maintain in their ordinary course. So all of that information, again, with respect to any material that's brought onsite will be documented. Every ounce of it will be traced in terms of how it is used and discarded pursuant to multiple levels of regulatory and safety schemes.
I just know if there's any protective.
PPE, things like that. I think, specific to whatever that material is, in order to use it, if there is a material that requires a PPE, they'll be required to use it. And again, pursuant to the guidance that your emergency services staff will have, if there's something that they need to wear to treat somebody with it, they'll be aware of what they need.
All right, yeah, at our expense, right? So I guess.
I don't.
Fire trucks, ambulance, they might know what they're dealing with, but.
So the building will have, you know, all of the required fire suppression and systems that are required to put out something. There's vents, emergency eyewash showers, everything else that would be associated with those requirements. So your normal fire apparatus will be able to address the emergency response to the things that are happening at this facility.
West Windsor also happens to be one of the hazmat response units for the county. So right here in West Windsor, so.
They were actually doing training simulations in this building, which happens to be vacant two weeks ago. We had all of your SWAT teams running. It actually scared the bejesus out of a number of our tenants that we made sure we sent a notification out because there was about, I don't know, 25, both marked and unmarked police cars at 105 two weeks ago. So they're intimately familiar with the building.
Good now? Okay, we're ready? Any other questions for our professionals or the applicant? Okay, I would like to open it up to the public. If the public would like to step up to the microphone, state your name, address, make your comments regarding this application, please do so now. Don't all line up at once. Okay, seeing no comments from the public, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, any debate amongst the, do we need a debate? Jerry, you want to read the conditions out or enumerate the conditions?
Yes. Minor site plan, six variances, three design waivers, four submission waivers. The conditions from Dan's memo and Francis's memo that we went over, and a couple that were discussed during the hearing in addition. They're going to use board-on-board fencing instead of chambering fencing. Is that for all of the fences?
It's the fencing similar to what they've used at their other facility.
Okay.
Correct.
That's covered under my condition three.
Yeah, okay. Third-party approvals have to be submitted to the, as are necessary, have to be submitted to the township. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions regarding conditions, submission waivers, design waivers, anybody? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
In the matter of application PB 2209, I move that the West Windsor Planning Board grant preliminary and final minor site plan approval, grant the requested C-bolt variances, and grant the requested design waivers, submission waivers, exceptions, and satisfy the conditions as outlined by counsel.
Now, for a minor site plan, it's not preliminary and final, just a minor site.
I'm looking at your text here, Jerry. It says preliminary and minor site.
Yeah, see, that's what they wrote.
Oh, that's what they wrote, okay.
Well, maybe Dan can correct me some.
Okay. Remove from the, remove that preliminary.
I'll second it.
It's just minus.
I was reading the text.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion by Curtis to approve, second by Simon, as outlined by our attorney. Cindy, please call the roll.
To LeBaro?
Yes.
Mr. Panko?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes, motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much for your time. We greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
There's one other issue, not to deal anything with this at all. When we reviewed that flood plain ordinance, Jerry, when we reviewed it, the DEP, apparently, there's been a few minor changes since we reviewed that version. My only concern that was about the definition of.
Hardship.
The hardship, the hardship. That's a new definition that just popped up.
DEP, yeah.
So what I just wanted to know, because we have to now reintroduce the ordinance, is have you seen that? Are you okay with that language? Or should the board take, is that another meeting to look at it?
Yeah, I haven't seen the language, although I did give an opinion to Sam and Francis that you didn't have to come back to the board because it was just a DEP required change to the definition of hardship. Sam, why don't you jump in?
The definition that was in the proposed code, I did send it to Jerry and Fran. I spoke with Fran. Fran did not feel it was necessary to have to go back to the planning board, and Jerry concurred with that. Did a short email to Gay explaining that, and that's where it's at.
Could you, could we at least have, have you look at it, that word? Because if you're, we're the planning board, and we have not seen that. There's a question about whether it's clean, whether it is, so I think so, but.
Just stating that, that. Up in that.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.